This is the regular meeting of the Mobile City Council, Tuesday, August 30th. Please stand for our invocation led by Pastor Liddell Cleveland, Senior, New Bayside Baptist Church, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
So good to see everybody. Let us go to the Lord in prayer. Our Father and our God, we are grateful once again for another opportunity to bless this meeting with a word of prayer. First, we want to say thank you. Thank you for raising us up out of slumber sleep. Thank you for the faculties of our minds. And as, oh God, we conduct the business of this city, we pray that all things be done in decent and order, that you will continue to be with our city leaders, and bless them, oh God. Bless every home that is represented here today, oh God. And I would be remiss if I could not pardon, just for a little while, to ask you to give us a spirit of calm in this city. We have lost so many lives to domestic violence, to crime. And, God, there are some things that you have to do. And we pray, oh God, right now, that you would give this city a spirit of calm, and that people will not be so quick to react, but to think about that action before they do. And, Lord, we ask all of this today in the name of Jesus, I pray. Amen.
Rollcock, President Small.
Here.
Vice President Gregory. Councilmember Penn.
Here.
Councilmember Carroll. Councilmember Reynolds.
Here.
Councilmember Daves.
Here.
Councilmember Jones. Statement of rules.
And good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Morning.
It's good to see everyone this morning. We do have rules at this particular meeting. At this time, I ask if anyone has any type of electronic device, please put on the off or the vibrated position. The off or the vibrated position. Any person desiring to address the council must sign in indicating the resolution, the ordinance appeal, public outcry, public hearing agenda item before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, the speaker must state his or her name and address. Any person desiring to speak to the council on a non-agenda item must contact the City Clerk office, located at 2:00 PM on a Thursday prior to the council meeting. The Thursday, the subject that he or she wishes to address must be identified and pertaining to the City of Mobile business. Any person who has not given proper notice to the City Clerk office and wishes to respond on a non-agenda item would not be allowed to address the council. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the council. A bell will sound to indicate the end of two minutes, and one minute remains. To summarize, the second bell indicates that the time has expired. When addressing the council, there is to be no personal address to any individual council members. All statements are to be made to the chair who will recognize any council member who wishes to respond. To maintain decorum, there will be no undue applause and a personal outcry. Malice to the clerk.
Approval of minutes of August 23rd. Second.
And promptly move to the second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Communications from the mayor.
Good morning. It's good to see everybody here. We appreciate you taking time out of your schedule to join us today. Couple of announcements. One is that I want to talk about Guff Quest and the things we're doing for our military. You know, there's still time for our active-duty military members and families to get free admission to the National Maritime Museum, which is Guff Quest, through what we're calling our Blue Star Program. Since May, we've welcomed more than 70 families to the museum at no cost, to them through this annual partnership that exists between the National Endowment of the Arts and the Blue Star Families Organization. And the program, which will end in Guff Quest on September 3rd, is open to currently serving military personnel, including National Guard members, reservists, and their immediate families. We hope that you will take advantage of touring Guff Quest because of this program. I don't know about you, but it's been great to see the sunshine, at least a little bit for the last few days. When I make this last remark having to do with movies in the park, I'm hopeful that the sun, even though the movies are at night, we're hoping that it's not going to be raining at night, but we are really appreciative of the ongoing improvement in programs that Parks and Rec continue to roll out, and movies in the park is one of those. This Thursday, we'll be showing the Mitchells versus the Machines at Langin Park. China, is that really a good movie? We don't know. So jury's out. We'll let y'all know. We'll give a report back on that next week. Also, I want to give a special thanks to our partner in all this, the Explorium Science Center. Okay, so at this time, I have a proclamation I would like to read, and I ask several people to please approach the podium, and it would be Melissa McNichol with Camp Rappahoe, Kimberly Wagner with the Children's and Women's Hospital, and Jennifer Bexley, Auburn's Army Foundation. If y'all could approach the podium, please. And so I will read the proclamation. I'll come present it, and then you will be welcome to make a couple of remarks. Okay? So the proclamation reads, "Whereas every September, we mark Childhood Cancer Awareness Month to educate and bring awareness to this issue and highlight the need for more funding and research. Whereas statistics show that one in every 285 children in the United States has cancer, every two minutes, a child is diagnosed with cancer, and more children are lost to cancer in the United States than any other disease. Yet less than 4% of the National Cancer Institute research budget is allocated to cure childhood cancer. And whereas the resources in Mobile to help children with cancer include treatment at the University of Women's, Children's and Women's Hospital, and Mitchell Cancer Center, fun activities at Camp Rappahoe, fundraising events hosted by Auburn's Army Foundation, 328, Miracles on the Bay, Joy of Life, and the yearly event Operation Superhero conducted by the Mobile Police Department, where SWAT team members rappel down the side of the hospital dressed in superhero costumes during a bell-ringing ceremony in celebration of each child completing their treatment. And whereas this year, with the additional challenges presented as a result of the ongoing pandemic, it is more important than ever that we acknowledge the devastating impact these diseases have on too many young people and their families, and provide much-needed support to them through the many organizations that serve them. Now therefore, I, William S. Thompson, the 108th Mayor of the City of Mobile, do hereby proclaim September 2022 as Childhood Cancer Awareness in the City of Mobile."
I just want to say, on behalf of Rappahoe Children's, on behalf of Rappahoe Children's Retreat Foundation, thank y'all so much for the support of this worthy cause.
Just a second, that there are so many families in our area that are affected by childhood cancer, and things like this just make a difference. It lets them know they're not in it alone. There are lots of organizations here, so anybody that wants to get involved can. We appreciate it.
So the next item is the Officer of the Month, and I'll call Chief Brian to make those presentations. And, Mr. President, I'll have to be leaving early for luncheon with Coastal Conversations, so we'll see you later.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, staff, certainly City Council. So today, I bring up two officers before you today. Officer McGuire to my far right, and Officer Miles to my left. McGuire was Officer of the Month for June, and he was not able to be with us during the last month's recognition. Both of these officers here, Officer McGuire, during his shift, 115 calls for service. More importantly than that, he made 17 felony arrests, apprehended a person that turned out to be a witness in a homicide that subsequently led to a homicide arrest on an investigation. Officer Miles here, this is not his first rodeo, so to speak. I'm not sure if he's ever been to a rodeo, but it is his third time being before the council today for Officer of the Month. 155 calls for service for the month of July, 14, or correction, 18 felony arrests, 54 misdemeanor arrests. But what I want to point out, these two gentlemen here are really the embodiment of what we're trying to push at the police department, and that is the standards of excellence, okay? So what we're looking at is attitude, appearance, competence, and service. Because of the, these two officers here work on the same squad in the first precinct, so I'm sure County and Small would like to hear this, but because of their efforts and because of what they're doing in the first precinct, we can now boast a little bit and say that the first precinct is down 22% in all apart wing crimes. And to that, we want to recognize both of these officers respectively for the Officer of the Month.
Mr. President, this time, Joe Snowden would introduce the administrative employees of the month, administrative services.
Good morning, once again. It's that time of the month where we have to recognize one of our outstanding administrative services and employees. And for July, I'd just like to announce that we have Maria Mason with the payroll. I think one of the most important jobs, make sure we have our paychecks all correct and we get it on time. So I'd like to come on up, and Leslie would like to say a few words to give some of the examples of why she was nominated.
Good morning. We also have John Nolletto here, who is the Deputy Director of our Payroll, and he works the closest with Maria. Maria, I'll start with, has the patience of the saint. She does a great job in her job in processing payroll of 2,300 paychecks every other week. So there's a big job that goes on there. She is very accurate. She's our eagle eye, looking for errors, making sure payroll is correct, timely. She knows her business, especially when it comes to employee leave. You would not even believe how many employees ask questions about, "My vacation, my sick time, how do I do this? How does this work?" Obviously, she can't talk to all 2,300 employees, but she has a great relationship with all the payroll clerks in all the departments, so she trains them, has them kind of do the entry work to help reduce our errors. But she just does a fantastic job. We could not do this without her, so I think she's very deserving of Employee of the Month with all that she does. In absences, she just jumps in, so no one would ever know that maybe half the payroll department would be out sick. She just makes it seamless. So congratulations, Maria. Thank you for all that she did.
Director Barber, is that, does that conclude the mayor's comments?
Yes, ma'am, that'll conclude the mayor's comments.
Monthly finance report.
Good morning, Mr. President.
Good morning.
Vice President and the rest of the council. This is going to be a finance day today, I guess, so I won't go too long on this. I just want to give you an update, though, on how we're doing year-to-date through July. July was an average month. Actually, sales tax revenues for the month were about $16.7 million, and we had budgeted 14, so actually, it came in higher than what we had planned by quite a bit. Year-to-date, we're still at 163, well, we're at 163 compared to 150, so we're about $13 million better than planned on the sales tax. Actually, just one other thing, one of your members had asked me to do is maybe look at how we were doing last year at this time, and so that $16.6 million that we brought in this year was about a half a million dollars higher than what we did last. So that was encouraging, particularly in light of all the economic news that you hear out there, but it's still something that we need to keep appraised of going forward. And let's see, for the year-to-date, 22 million in total revenues against a budget of 17.7, and year-to-date, 267 versus 243. And last year, we were, our sales tax for the month of, our total tax for the month of July was 21.7 versus 22.4, so a little bit better. And year-to-date, last year, we were only at 253 versus the 266 where we are today. So that's kind of a different perspective from 24. Expense-wise, I think we're still doing well, although we're trying to watch things as we come close to the end of the fiscal year. Public safety budget this year, this time last year was 84 million, this time this year, but our actual spend was 78 million, so we're about $5.5 million under budget for spending. Public works, our budget was 51 million, and we've spent only 44 million. And admin services, our budget was 10.5, and we've spent 8.2 year-to-date. So overall, our total positive variance is about $18.2 million for the year in terms of our spending versus what our budget was. And I think, you know, we've talked about this before. It's a good news, bad news story. The good news is that it's money that we didn't speed needlessly, but it might have been money that we could have spent had we had, where we thought it, or had we had the support or the resources to do it. But that's something that we're going to be addressing more closely this afternoon when we talk about the budget. Finally, I know we talk about this every month, the surplus reconciliation. As of the end of July, total available money that's unencumbered is about $74 million. That's down a little bit, mainly because we lost, we lost money in June, and we basically broke even in July, so we did come down a little bit from the last time they gave this report. For the balance of the year, we're looking at maybe losing about 10 million, August and September, mostly in September. That's typically what we do in September, is we have accruals and other accounting adjustments, and I think if you were to go back over time, you'd probably see that, that's the case just about every year. And we budget that as well, so I don't think we're going to be doing any worse than what we did in the budget. So that's it. You know, we're watching closely. We have our budget presentation today, and we're looking forward to sharing that with you all this afternoon. Any questions?
Yeah. Yes, Mr. President. So Bob, can you tell me how much is in the surplus running?
Well, total in the surplus that's available to be used, $73 million.
And then, of course, if we add, what, 40?
Yeah, if you added, if you added the 40 and everything else, we'd be around 132. And also, the expected loss that we're going to have in August and September, that's back to the net.
I'm a man of faith, and we're going, I know your job is to tell, it's like, you go to the doctor, and the doctor say, "This, what's going on?", and I come back and say, "Well, I believe it's going to be different." So I'm declaring, we're not going to lose money, but you have to tell me, you know, the facts. I believe in three S's. You have save, well, of course, the city's been doing an amazing job, because we have that amount of money in the surplus. I believe in sowing, that's in my life, when I look at money. When I look at sowing, that's a need, so we've been providing the needs of me paying payroll and stuff. Then you got the third S, and that's spend. That's on things you want. That's how I kind of, in my life, that's how I kind of got it, and I believe it's a great example to do, not just in my life, but in different organizations, when you have the money to spend. So I'm ready to spend. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
So let me, let me just go back through, so it's about a $73 million unencumbered balance in the general fund, and the 40 million y'all were talking about is the reserve or the two-months reserve?
That's our two-months reserve.
So the 73 million is net of the two-months reserve? Okay. You know, that's, you know, $73 million is a lot of money, and I hate to be the Cassandra all the time, but a lot of bad things could happen. At some point, I've been predicting this economy to turn around now for 12 or 15 years, sooner or later, I'm going to be right, and it's going to turn around, and we're going to have what we had in the eight, nine timeframe. We're going to have, instead of increasing tax revenues, we're going to have declining tax revenues. So, you know, I'd be real reluctant to add fixed expenses. We talked some this morning about addressing some of these maintenance issues, the grassmowing, that kind of thing with contracted services. I certainly think that would be a way to go, because it's something that we're not, you know, that isn't a fixed expense that we're tied to. But at some point, at some point, the economy is going to turn around. We don't know what, we don't know what's going to happen. We're talking, we're also talking about spending a bunch of money possibly over in the Civic Center. So we just, you know, all that's got to be balanced out. All that's got to be balanced out, and when you start adding fixed operational expenses, it really starts to limit your flexibility down the road. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President.
Mr. Carroll.
Just one realization, we do have some fixed operational expenses right now, and some of those operational expenses result in a lost and also in an asset depreciation, one being the Civic Center itself. Civic Center itself loses better than $2 million a year already, and that is a fixed operational cost that we pay for every year. That's also inclusive of an asset depreciation every year, too, because of the transfer we have to make from the actual city's budget to the Civic Center budget to close the gap on operations over there. So when we start talking about adding fixed operational costs, let's not forget that we also, right now, have several operating costs that continue to dig and tear our pockets, where if we correct those, then we will see a better gain over time. Moving forward, though, talking about this year's budget, I can name you seven line items already right now where we're adding new fixed operational costs to our budget that will come out of this revenue surplus that Mr. Joel's already talking about. The consideration of those fixed operational costs over the next five, 10 years will weigh heavy on what this council or the next administration is able to do with revenue that we're realizing when some of the people may or may not be here that are part of this savings process. So that's also something to think about. And thirdly, when it comes to spending, from what I've seen over the last four years, in the fifth year going into the previous administration's term, the current administration's term, we're constantly saving excess revenue over what we have to truly spend, for what reason. I think we do need to spend some of that money. The budget does not show a few things that I have suggested or requested for the council in the next fiscal year that I'd really like to see there, see be there. And being that we're talking about the monthly financial statement, I'm going to go ahead and make this request, I've sent it via email already today, that the administration please provide a breakdown of the budget, and it's totally, this little 40, 50-page thing I have does not expand the line items to see what's truly in these individual line items. I don't want to vote for a line item where I can't see what the line, what the expenditures are in a line item. I like to see those. So please provide those to every member on the council, and to also to anybody else in the, in the city that would like to have them. I'd like to see the budget back up on the city's website like it used to be in totality as opposed to just being a simple few line items. Mr. President, we can talk about the rest during the finance committee meeting, and I really appreciate the time.
Anyone else?
Yeah, Mr. President. Just to dovetail on the comments we've already heard, just in between pre-council and council meeting, I got an email from an HOA president. That HOA president has spent almost $8,000 to trim trees in his neighborhood because the city doesn't get to it. That just, it exacerbates the problems that we have when we see an HOA who's got extremely limited resources spending that much money on something the city ought to be doing. We've got the money, and there's got to be companies out there. If they're not out there, then my gosh, I think you got seven people sitting up here that'll help beat the bushes to find the companies out there to get after this. Let's spend the money for that. I think that's a great expenditure for problems that we know exist. A lot of the excess revenue that we have, I think, is on the backs of salary positions that we don't feel we've heard that month after month. It was a few months ago that y'all were doing a survey, or started a salary survey. Where are we with that, and when are we going to get the results of that?
I believe it's around September 9th. We should be meeting with Evergreen on their first run at the competitive compensation.
Okay, and hopefully, we have some, some time to interject the feedback there into the possible impacts of next year's budget, if we take some of those recommendations, and I'm sure there's probably some salary increases in there that we need to look at as well. Lastly, Bob, I just want to say thank you to you and your team. Month after month, you do a tremendous job getting all of this data. It's not easy, and I just wanted to say thank you for that. Y'all do an excellent job.
Very much.
Mr. President, one, one more question, just so I can add this up right. Was the 8.2 included in the 132, or is it still within the budget, and you're just holding it there as an unrealized savings until the end of the fiscal year?
8.2?
Yeah. There's 74 million plus 40 million to give us the 132. There's also 8.2 million in unspent money in the current budget. Is that to be added to the 132?
Let me, let me maybe do it this way. Okay, so at the end of, I'll take it back a month, just kind of walk you through it. End of the month of June, we had 132 million, and you back out the 47 million, okay, which left us with 84 million. Okay, we also have to back out, there was another, I was forgetting, ever since I came here. Oh, we have losses, losses of about $10 million that we're expecting between now and the end of the year, and that's going to take us down to the 73, 74 million that's unencumbered that we'll be able to lose.
I'm asking about, you made a statement about 8.2 million of unspent revenue.
Oh, oh. I'm not sure I'm exactly sure where you're, I guess I would say this, when I say unspent revenue, I say we're, for the year. You know, we had a budget of 266 million in revenue. We had a budget, I'm sorry, we had a budget of 243, and we brought in 267. That's $23 million in excess of what we thought we were going to get. The 8 million, I'm not sure I even remember.
For the month?
Oh, for the month? Oh, okay. I still don't see the 8 million. But for total revenue for the month, we ended up at 22 million, okay? Our budget was 17, and we were about 4.7, almost $5 million better.
We can figure it out.
Okay, okay.
Just be fine. I just want to know exactly where we are.
Okay, I'll give you a copy. Okay, any questions?
Uh, Mr. President?
Mr. Ronald.
Bob, I wanted to take a moment here to, to thank you for your service, along with the entire finance department, and everybody who worked for the city for being good stewards of the taxpayer dollar. I think sometimes it's, uh, underappreciated maybe, uh, because we, you know, hammer you with questions and we wanna know all the fine details, but I, it's not lost on me, the work that y'all do, and I really appreciate it. So thank you.
Thank you, Beth. Thanks very much.
Anyone else?
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Adoption of the agenda?
Sick.
The proper move is second, and in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Agenda's adopted.
Appeals, we have requests for wave of the noise ordinance on November fifth on Springhill Avenue, October twenty-second in Cooper Riverside Park, November the eighteenth on Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Avenue, September fourth and fifth on Burtonwood Drive, September tenth in Langen Park, and September the third on Fontaine Drive.
So move.
Second.
The proper move is second, and in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing, today is a public hearing to consider approval of a certificate of public convenience and necessity to drop off transit to operate a shuttle service.
Just open up the particular public hearing for the said item. Would anyone like to address the council by coming down, stating your name and your address to the podium right here in front of me? You may do so at this time. If not, the public hearing flows.
Public hearing to declare the structures at two fifteen and a half Norman Street, one eleven eleven Springhill Avenue, and four twenty-two, four twenty-three, I'm sorry, Mohawk Street, public nuisances and ordering them demolished or secured.
Just open up the public hearing for this particular said item. If anyone present that would like to address the council, you may do so by coming down and addressing the council, by stating your name and your address. If not, just the public hearing flows.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council, Ronald Hunt.
Not present.
Greg Foster.
Good morning. Good morning. My name is Greg Foster. I live at twenty-five hundred Granada Avenue, three six six nine three here in Mobile. I am the spokesman for the Retired Firefighters Association. I come to you this morning having been instructed to do so in times past, uh, during presentation and consideration of new proposed budget. Uh, so we are at that cycle now for fiscal year twenty twenty-three. So here I am, and, and, uh, we're hopefully to resolve a long overdue COLA for the pensioners under the Mobile Police and Firefighters Pension Fund. I represent as an advocate approximately three hundred and twenty retired firefighters in this city. The Association of Retired Firefighters meets monthly and discusses issues pertaining, pertaining to our needs and, um, our needs are simple. Hold the line on the rising healthcare coverage and address the need for cost of living adjustments in our pension checks. I'll go ahead and say that I'm aware that there is no, again, increase in our healthcare coverage for retirees, and I greatly appreciate that for all my constituents. Uh, we dedicated ourselves to a career, not just a job, and we did this on meager salaries, barely enough to pay the bills, and always required the need for additional income sources to fill the gaps. I personally walked into a firehouse to pull my first shift fifty-two years ago, in June of nineteen seventy, and then making two dollars an hour. We never enjoyed unprecedented raises and adjustments and incentives that today's firefighter has received, but then, we were here for the long haul. A pension awaited us for a lifetime of work. Surviving in this economy, relying basically on a meager pension and social security check is challenging, to say the least. In all fairness, the mayor Stimson and his staff, and you and this council, you did not create this problem, but you inherited it. We are now in a bu, new budget cycle and send your hands to find some way to authorize a lasting month-to-month increase in our pension checks. We are grateful for the re, recent bonus of two dollars per month of service that, uh, will be doled out in October. These bonuses, as I've said before, only appear for a little while, and then they're gone. We need something more substantial in the form of a COLA. Please don't let another budget opportunity go by and just kick the can down the road. Social Security has at least seen fit to grant two COLAs in the past three years. The Pension Fund has granted us a COLA, has not granted us a COLA since two thousand and five. That's seventeen years. So I thank you for your time, and hopefully you will consider what I've brought before you today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Uh, Mr. John.
Yeah, I'd like to ask the administration, um, what kind, have we done any analysis on what a COLA, uh, the cost of living would, would cost the city for the police and firefighters?
So the finance director sits on the police and fire pension board. He says that, um, he'll get those numbers for you.
Thank you.
The, the biggest question would be the future, uh, unfunded liability that would also, uh, uh, be affected by a move such as that. I haven't attended the police-fire pension board meeting in a while, but I don't, just, just looking and thinking about the numbers of retirees that were fit, that, that would be a pretty big number. And, you know, I don't know how we would handle that, even though I like to see that happen. I thought in the budget I saw a CO, two raises in this coming cycle anyway. Uh, I can't remember if one was COLA and one was merit, but I, I did see raises in this year's budget cycle, but I don't know if you guys were included. That's why I've asked for a total breakdown of the budget, so I can see where all of these things are going, so that there's some clarity in my mind as we pass the budget. But if you would, when you get time, I would really like to know that myself.
Mr. President. Mr. Holt, do you know off the top of your head what the current unfunded liability in the police and firefighter pension plan is?
Well, it kinda varies, uh, depending upon the market.
Right, sure, sure it does.
But, uh, at the end of September, we were ninety percent funded. Um, we had a, uh, we had a, we had a pension, uh, we had pension assets of about two hundred and seventy-three million dollars at the end of September. That dropped down probably about thirty million dollars during the course of the next several months, uh, as the market made its move. Recovered some, back up to about two hundred and sixty million, up until about a week and a half ago, and now it's starting to move again in the other direction. But, you know, formerly, the, the most recent unfunded liability was ninety percent, but I will bet that by the time we get to September of this year, it's probably gonna be something less than that because of the swings in the marketplace. My only comment about the pension is I have full sympathy for everybody who's a retired firefighter or policeman or anybody else who lives on a pension and a fixed income. But, you know, this pension fund was near bankruptcy back in the nineties.
Right.
And, uh, and the city and the pension fund and, uh, and the, and the pensioners, you know, got together and they formed a plan in which to recover, and it was a plan that took thirty years. We're now in year twenty-six, and, uh, and we've made considerable amount of progress, to the point where I think most people are surprised that we got there. What, what I'm afraid of, and I don't have the number at the top of my head, but I'll get the number. But a COLA, depending upon the size of the COLA, is not only a, a payment one time, it's a payment in perpetuity.
Forever.
And, uh, and, and that, that can have significant impact on the, uh, on the, on the unfunded portion of the pension that was unexpected. And that's really, you know, has been, uh, I think, the city's position that we wanna get through these next four years, and we wanna get that pension in as good a, uh, position as we possibly can before we start entertaining this. I can certainly understand where they're coming from. I really can. You know, if I wasn't working here, I'd be in the same boat. And I, uh, and I, uh, and I, but maybe not as long as, you know, I, we, we, we talk from time to time. But that's the position that we're in. We're trying to preserve and we're trying to repair the pension, uh, over the timeframe that we were given, and to do something different would, uh, would alter that, would alter that recovery.
But, but isn't it true, when I first came on council, we had a one-hundred-million-dollar unfunded liability in the, in the, uh, police and firefighter pension. And that's been significantly reduced. But, but is, is it not true that one of the main things that has occurred to reduce that unfunded liability is what's happened in the stock market during that period of time? And, and the good stuff that has happened in the stock market to fill that gap can be undone by a downturn in the stock market. And, and, and we need to be in a position where that, where that, we, our first obligation is to continue the benefit without undue imposition on the city's finances. And I, I think if we're close to the point where, where the pension and firefighter plan is fully funded, then I'd, I'd be very, very cautious about adding significant additional liabilities.
Thank you. And I, you know, I guess the only other thing I would say is, you know, that recovery program that was put in place back in the seventies, uh, it grew over time as part of the structure. And, you know, this year, we're paying over twenty million dollars, uh, city money into that pension. Now, that's gonna come two thousand twenty-eight, that's gonna decline significantly, um, as long as the, you know, the market doesn't decline further. Uh, but nevertheless, it will decline. And, uh, and I think though that realistically, I believe we're all optimistic that we will see a, a fully funded pension as was intended when we get through this, but there's no guarantee, and that's the problem with, uh, a COLA, particularly now. And, uh, you know, I'd hate to see the liability go up even further, um, between now and then because of a decision that's made so close to come and bring this thing to conclusion.
You know, I don't know whether it would be contrary to the, uh, contrary to the letter of the agreement we made, I don't know, twenty-something years ago, but I think it would certainly be contrary to the spirit of that agreement to take on additional liability.
Anyone else?
Yeah, one, just one last statement or positive statement for your request. The city do, the city does have opportunities like it just had to provide spot support or spot incentives with one-time contributions during a year to help, uh, retirees. And if those opportunities prevail itself, then I don't see any one of these council members not voting for these spot incentives to, to help with retirees like we've just done. I think that was, uh, one of the reasons why that incentive was done, knowing that, uh, a cost of living raise, you know, would, would really, uh, hinder us or impair what the future may hold for us with the unfunded liability. So I have no problem in the future if that type of situation arises, and I'm pretty sure no one else up here would either.
Another council member?
Angela Shavers Robinson.
Angela Shavers Robinson, I live at sixteen oh two Navco Road. I stand before, I see once again addressing this ditch problem that the city wrongfully dug in front of my home. We all make mistakes. They got the address wrong. I, I'm dealing with standing water with all this rain. They came out, they widened it out, they dressed it up, put down a little sand, a little netting, straw, dirt, grass. A ditch is a ditch, it's still a ditch, it's still there. As opposed to the other side of my drive, the water would seep into the ground. Water in this ditch is just standing. I'm on level surface, it's not going anywhere.
Excuse me, can you give us your name and your address, please?
Angela Shavers Robinson, sixteen oh two Navco Road, Mobile, Alabama. Like I say, this is my third time addressing this. My question to the city is, when do the city plan to take action to rectify this situation? Do I have to wait until the pipe just completely gives in? Because in them digging well below the surface of the pipe, it has a crack in it. It's my only way in and out of my yard. Thank you.
Do we have anyone from that department that would like to address a concern? Is anyone from the engineer department would like to address their concerns?
President?
Yes.
I think we've made note, um, of the address, and I think we'll get an update and be back in touch with her. We're also doing a status of all the ditches and recommendations that we'll be bringing before the council.
Mr. President?
Uh, Mr. Gregory.
I don't wanna step on anybody's toes here, but I remember Ms. Robinson coming down during our last term, talking about this, because it all started with a mistaken address. And some of us here on the dais may not be familiar with, with what she was talking about, so. And Ben, I don't want to, um, get into your business, but, um, you know, this is something that's been ongoing for a long time, that, uh, she needs some resolve on.
You know, I was trying to remember what happened last time we addressed this, and I think that they had repaired the ditches in front of a residence. I think the issue is more downstream, and so I'll just, I'll have to get you a status of what's happening downstream.
Uh, Mr. Kara. If we dug a ditch and it was at the wrong address, we need to fill it back in. It's, it's, it's simple. If we dug a ditch at the wrong address, then why don't we just go fill it back in and correct it?
That's basically what happened. The crews went out to an address, and they went to the wrong house in front of her house and did ditch repair when it should have been at a different address. And so since that time, city crews have come back in to try to address the problems. And what she's saying is that the problem that we created is still there.
And again, we'll have to look into it, but my recollection is, um, they did go back and fix the ditch in front of her house, but there is a downstream issues that will not allow it to drain, and that's what needs to be addressed.
Mr. President?
Mr. Ronald.
I was made briefly aware of this issue this morning and showed some pictures and that sort of thing. This is my first time knowing about this issue. Um, and I look forward to working with the administration to find a resolution that satisfies, you know, everybody involved. But I will draw attention to the fact that, uh, the, the city essentially owns the right of way, generally twenty-five foot from the center line into the property. That's generally the way it works. So a fifty-foot ride right away. And what, what I've found going through neighborhoods is, we've got ditching problems that exist, say down an entire road. Then you have some neighbors that don't want their yard messed up for that ditch to be dug, and some that, that do. They say, I've got this water problem. And it creates sort of an adverse situation where we just want the water to flood. But if, if we, we can't dig a ditch downstream, then because somebody doesn't want their yard torn up, then it creates a backup for everyone else. And I don't know if that's what is happening in this case, but, um, I think it's fair to understand that a ditch that's in the right of way, the city has an obligation to clean that ditch out, um, even though it may tear the yard up, although we should probably do it in up, although we should probably do it in the most non-intrusive way possible. So I look forward to speaking with you further about this issue. Thank you, Mr. President.
Another council member. Madam Clerk?
Reggie Hill regarding Resolution 01709, 21717, 21719, 6729 through, um, three, three thirty, okay.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Um, citizens and stakeholders of Mobile, good morning, Reggie Hill, 1007th Century. Excuse me, I rise today to address what yet again appears to be extreme abuse upon the taxpayer. I'm just kind of astonished at how quickly we conjure up a response, even through rule amendments for chamber behavior, yet too often, you know, as expressed by Ms. Shavers Robinson today. We sit aloof with regards to chamber action. The reason why we meet to conduct and transact only in the true interest of the public city business. And for that reason, that's why I want to address those, those, those matters listed before us. I want to start with 01709. And it's interesting, everything I presented on last week, you all discussed extensively this morning. So while I may not get a response up here, it's good to know that someone is listening. With the Top Golf piece, I shared the, the closest that I have with golf, and I would even go even further. I play, Gary Player irons, but my driver and three wood are Callaway Epic. So, I mean, this is directly related to me. Nonetheless, the resources that we're allocating for this, we need to put the same enthusiasm to the matters that are affecting the public directly. And so I want you to consider that as you make this decision. For time's sake, I'm hoping that you'll respond to things that were already sent in, but I must move forward to these other matters. 21717, the $300,000 for the engineering support, I too agree that this should be held over. And I would like to take time to compare the number of money spent on contracts based on what we would be spending if we just outfitted the personnel in the department. Do we have anything that, that shows us the comparison that is this more advantageous for us to go about this route? Or would it actually be better for us to actually get people in here to work for the city that could complete the project and the requests of the public as well? We still haven't had this answer from last week, where we said this was just from leftover money. So I, I would like to have some clarity on where this leftover money is. Lastly, 60, that's 729 through 736. This morning, it was insisted that getting discretionary fund out is a complicated process. Now, to my knowledge, this is rather confusing to me because we function under a strong council form of government. A council body in Mobile, Alabama makes the law. Mr. Day's mentioned getting discretionary money out by the end of the fiscal year. I believe we should also get the money out that was spent the previous fiscal year that hasn't gotten out yet. Once this body makes a decision, that's it. How are we still delaying the resources to these people who are supposed to be serving a public purpose? Hopefully we can get this answered. We're expected to see a $10 million decrease this year, and we're spending $10 million on resurfacing today, but we see a lot of our issues are dealing with drainage. I would love to see us focus more on the drainage across the city. Let's take a term just to do that. Because five to 10 to 15 minutes of rain in the city of Mobile, every district is impacted. So we'll continue this going further, but thanks for being on the floor.
Thank you.
Ordinance is held over. 64042, rezoned property at 4119, 4161, 4173, and 4175 Hallsdale Road from R1 B3 and I1 to I1.
So moved.
Impromptu move in second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass it.
CIP resolutions held over. 21708, authorized contract with H.O. Weaver &amp; Sons Construction for 2022 CIP City Wyatt Resurfacing. 21718, authorized contract with Midwestern Commercial Roofers for James Seals Park Community Center Roof.
So moved.
Second?
Impromptu move in second in the discussion.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Reynolds?
This is a $10 million resurfacing contract that's taken quite a bit of time to get moving, and we're there. So I wanted to let the citizens of District Four know that 1.145 million has been allocated to resurfacing in our district. And those roads include Alden Drive and surrounding roads, the entire neighborhood of Lansdowne, Larchmont Drive and surrounding roads, Oak Terrace Drive, and the long-awaited White Pine Court and Cross Creek Drive. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. Any others discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass it.
Resolution is held over. 01709, authorized agreement with the city of Mobile, Mobile County, Mobile Satchel LLC, and Realty Link LLC.
So moved.
Oh, we taking that separate?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, okay. 08710, approved item-based bid for bunker, gear, decon, cleaning, Mobile Fire Rescue Department. 08711, approved purchase order to Centus Corporation for uniforms for traffic engineering and electrical departments. 08712, approved purchase order to TSA for desktop computers. 08713, approved purchase order to CDW Government for wireless internet access points. 08714, approved purchase order to Toder for garbage cart lids, hinges, and screws, screws. 08715, approved purchase order to Olive Equipment for boom truck. 13716, authorized change order with Lon Lane Quiz doing business as LTS Development Group for demolition of structure at 2775 Spring Hill Avenue. 21719, authorized performance contract with Explorer Center doing business as Experium Science Center. 25720, accept permanent drainage, drainage easement from Board of Water and Sewer Commissioners of the city of Mobile for the Mobile Bay Shore Habitat Conservation and Acquisition Initiative, Three Mile Creek.
So moved.
Impromptu move in second in the discussion.
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Mr. Reynolds?
I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the Mobile Chamber of Commerce, the mayor, many other citizens throughout the city who have taken this opportunity that's been put before us for Top Golf. If you follow Top Golf's Twitter, you will see that there are cities much bigger than us that have a lot of things that we don't have that are begging Top Golf to come to their city. And I am glad that Top Golf has chosen us through, of course, a lot of effort. We're now where we're, looks like we're gonna get Top Golf. So again, thanks again to the chamber, thanks to the administration, and everyone else who played a role in making this happen.
I'd also like to piggyback behind my colleague, Councilman Reynolds. This is a game changer for Mobile. You know, I had, was talking to some colleagues out of town, and it was stating Mobile about to get a Top Golf. Y'all on the map. And so this is pretty much gonna be a game changer, you know, for our region. You know, I stated, I made the comment on last week that we always see money leaving out of our state, going to Mississippi, Florida, Tennessee, and Georgia all the time, you know, from our area, you know, going to casinos and, and lottery. But now we have something that would draw those people to come to our area for a family-friendly atmosphere. And I can't wait till they get here and be in production. And again, I thank the administration for working on this project, and also the Mobile Chamber too for working diligently on this project also. Any other discussion?
And Mr. President?
Uh, Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I'd like to piggyback on your comments. I agree. I think this is a great endeavor for the city. When, when I talk to peers and colleagues and friends and tell them that Mobile's getting a Top Golf, their, their response is always almost similar. They say, wow, you know, it's impressive that we're able to, to bring in an, an agency like Top Golf to this city. Had a lot of discussion over the past week about why are we investing or risking $1.25 million to, to bring this to Mobile? The answer is very simple. We're gonna make that plus so much more over the course of the next four or five years, regardless of what happens after that. This will be a moneymaker for our city in, in so many different ways. We also have a gap in this city to provide recreation such as this to young families with kids that will use this. It's not a golfer's venue. Golfers use it, but probably 80% of the folks that will go to this venue have never touched a golf club and never been on a golf course. It, it's an entertainment venue. It's gonna provide jobs, about 150 jobs to the city. And we've all seen all of the dynamics of, of what, what that entails. But, you know, I, I think we would miss an outstanding opportunity if we did not successfully complete the process and say, welcome aboard to Mobile. We're born to celebrate, and this is a heck of a way to do it. Thank y'all for bringing it to Mobile.
Mr. President?
Uh, Mr. Penn?
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, I would like to join with my colleagues to the Mobile Chamber, to the administration. Thank you so much for making this happen. This is a great opportunity for the city of Mobile. We don't have a entertainment venue like Top Golf. And so when you add some of the great events that we do have in the city of Mobile, this just adds to it. Mardi Gras, Senior Bowl, Gulf Coast Challenge. People now will want to come, not just for those events, but just like the president stated, President Small, from all over, from Florida to Mississippi, people will be coming in. And, and this is going back to my three S's: save, sow, and spend. We gotta get to the place where we move Mobile forward. Can't stay in the same place of a city of potential. It's time to move the city of Mobile forward, and this is a great opportunity. Thank you, Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Carroll?
I guess, first, to the chamber, thank you for your involvement in this, but there's a request. Instead of having the chamber's annual golf tournament on the golf course, I suggest that we have it at Top Golf. And secondly, which means in response to someone earlier talking about the type of irons that they keep in their bag, got an old bag with some Titleist, uh, Titleist Pro V4s in them that I still swing around every now and then, but it looks like it's time for me to bring out the Medica so I can get my swing worked up on a little bit, so I can make these holes at the Top Golf, because I don't plan on getting beat. Now, the thing is, I know some of these council members up here have never swung a club before in their life, probably don't even own any sticks. So I can't wait for the entertainment value alone that Top Golf is gonna present to this council, especially with some of these guys that probably, I, I don't even know if they can hit the ball or not, much less, much less find it. So for those who challenge the thought, I see you down there smiling. I can't wait to get you on a Top Golf course. But some of those who challenge the, the reason why the expenditure and why spend on retail, it wasn't the retail value in this at all. The, the value in the Top Golf is the entertainment value more so than anything else. And that's why it's a good investment. And Mobile and its quality of life needs to continue to provide entertainment values such as this so that we move the city forward. So I was glad to do it. Looking forward to actually getting out there and trying out our facility after it's completed.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Gregory.
Just to go over some of the things that we have heard, questions and discussions have been ongoing for the last week since the city has had the Top Golf on our agenda. Some of the questions were about things that had been read or seen on the internet and in local media as well, addressing some past lawsuits against the company that have been settled. And I didn't have the answers when people had questioned me about it, although I had read the articles as well. But as I understand it, after speaking with officials, all of this is in the past, and that in these last couple of years since Callaway Golf has taken over, there have been no such issues that these articles have referred to. And each one of these Top Golf franchises are run individually by an individual management company, and they have a set of policies and procedures that everybody signs on to to make sure that each franchise, Mobile's of course included, will be successful. I also have a statement that Top Golf sent because there were some questions raised about wages. I know people had asked about it, and they weren't supplied, I think, at the county commission meeting, and so people had asked about that as well. But here's the statement. "Top Golf is focused on fully staffing their venue and accordingly will pay the competitive wages necessary to do so and accelerate wages to fit the marketplace. Fully staffed, the venue will have 30 salaried positions with an average of more than $50,000 a year plus in benefits, and an additional 120 part-time and full-time positions with hourly wages up to $27 an hour. Additionally, any employee, including waitstaff who works more than 28 and a half hours, is eligible for full-time benefits." I know questions have come up about the incentives. Why do you pay economic development incentives to this company? Well, it, it's really no different in principle to the economic development incentives that we pay to other projects that the chamber brings to us. This is a $22 million project. It will create construction jobs in the near term, as well as, of course, the other jobs. And tax revenues that will come into the city. And that tax revenue goes back to the city coffers to take care of all the things that you hear us council people talking about all of the time: resurfacing, ditches, sidewalks, all the projects that we, you know, try to get to in our city that is part of what we do as city government. So I believe this is a good investment for the city. I certainly understand where the concerns had come from, and that's why I wanted to address them. But I think this will be a good investment for the city and in the long term. And I certainly hope that each of us here and people out in the city of Mobile and throughout this region will come and participate and help make this a hugely successful venture in the city of Mobile.
Thank you, Madam President. One? And one else? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass it.
21717, authorized contract with Kimley, Horn, and Associates for engineering support related to grant proposal and development.
So moved.
Second?
Impromptu move in second in the discussion.
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Mr. Reynolds?
I have received a list of these grants, and I want to file them with clerk's office so they can include those in our minutes and make it part of the record so that we can go back and access them whenever we need be. I have no objection to going ahead and moving this thing forward at this point.
Any others discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Consent resolution is being introduced, 03722 through 6737.
Move to waive the rules.
Wait.
Move to waive the rules.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I have a question for the clerk, if you don't mind. We acted on 01709, and we acted on 21717. Did we act on the rest of them?
No, we acted on all of them with the exception of 717. I just called that one out separately. I didn't know that you were going to move forward.
I, I got confused. I thought we were taking up 01709 separately.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, now, move to waive the rules for immediate consideration of these resolutions as read.
Impromptu move in second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Rules to waive.
03722, appoint, you want me to take that one separately, or? 03722, appoint this gentleman next to me, Christopher Arledge, and Shelbani Hall as full-time judges of the Mobile Municipal Court.
So moved.
Second?
Impromptu move in second in the discussion.
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Mr. Vice President?
I just want to congratulate Chris and Shelbani. Call them by their first names because we've known them for so long. And in Shelbani Hall's case, have worked with her as a municipal judge for many, many years, and I'm happy to support her. Chris Arledge has been our counsel attorney for many years now, and we have worked very successfully with him as our counsel attorney. So I am happy to support both of these folks. I hate to lose Chris in this capacity, but I certainly wish him well going forward and look forward to seeing him at our meetings as we do our other full-time judges who have been on the bench. So look forward to those, Chris, seeing you out in the district.
Mr. President?
Uh, Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I want to echo those comments as well and, and say thank you to all of those that applied for the position. We had, what, 13 or 14? 17? Lost count. All the applicants were, were very well qualified. And I also want to say happy retirement to Judge Witten. He will be sorely missed. Chris, job well done, and, and we'll miss you with the city Um, Chris, job well done, and, and we'll miss you with the city council, but I know you're gonna do great things as municipal judge.
Um, Mr. President.
Mr. Carroll.
Uh, I only have one word to say to Chris. Congratulations. You know, job well done. I know you're looking forward, it's a lifelong goal. Happy to see you achieve that. And look forward to seeing you out on the river, too.
Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. Pan.
I wanna join in with my colleagues. Of course, congratulations to Judge Hall and to you as well, Chris. Um, thank you to all the applicants that applied. We had a lot of great people that came. Um, it's a, a happy day, um, for you, Chris, but sad as well for me in a way, 'cause, um, you, you have been a, an amazing, um, council attorney, so we definitely gonna miss you up there. Congratulations. Thank you, Mr. President.
I have a question to our city attorney. Is this too late to take back your vote?
Yeah, I was gonna ask that same question, Mr. President. Uh, I, I really, I, I'd say this, if, if Chris does half as good a job on the benches he's done here, you have done an excellent job, so we hate to see him go, glad, glad to see him succeed in taking the bench.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Navarre.
Um, as city clerk, uh, we, I've seen many, uh, council attorneys and worked with, um, um, all of them, and I am truly going to miss, uh, Chris. We have worked well together. Uh, he has, uh, truly been an asset to our office and to the office of the, um, city council. So, uh, congratulations, and sorry to see you leave.
Mr. President.
Yeah, Mr.
So when does Chris and Shelbani officially start?
October one.
On the bench? Say it again?
October one.
October one.
Officially. We still have to, you know, get there swearing in.
Uh, Chris, are you, you're gonna stick through till October one, or you are? Okay, so I'll save all the sappy stuff until you, you make your way to the bench. Thank you for your willingness to serve.
Again, thank you, Chris. Uh, you will be very, very missed from this council, and again, we do appreciate the hard work that you had gave us within the last couple of years. Again, thank you so much. Anybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Fails. Just passes, yeah.
Mr. President, I just wanna say thank you to the council for your confidence and your vote. Uh, I'm really looking forward to this opportunity, and, uh, I'm sure Judge Hall is as well, and, uh, we'll work hard for y'all.
Thank you.
Zero-three, seven, two, three. Appoint Josh Memm to the Mobile Tree Commission, thirty-seven, seven, twenty-four. Recommend approval to DVC Board for issuance of a restaurant, retail liquor license, Certus Coffee on South Royal Street, forty, seven, twenty-five, seventy, twenty-six. Are declaring the structures at two fifteen and a half Norman Street, eleven-eleven Spring Hill Avenue.
Uh, no, uh, no, no, uh, two fifteen is fine. Please take out, uh, forty-seven, two-six. Needs to be separate.
Okay, so we're, I'm reading seven, twenty-five separately?
No, you're reading, uh, seven, seven, twenty-six separately.
Oh, okay.
And seven, twenty-seven.
Right. All right. Okay. Fifty-eight, seven, twenty-eight, declare Wees Noxious Group sixteen, thirty-two. Sixty-seven, twenty-nine, seven, thirty, seven, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, and thirty-six are determining appropriations to the Mo- to Mobile United, John Ella Floor High School, African Town Community Teach and Outreach, Kingdom Covenant Connections, Inc., Dearborn Young Men's Christian Association, Inc., Mobile Alumni Chapter, Kappa Alpha Psi, Inc., The United Way of Southwest Alabama, Inc., and Positive Dental Impressions Serve a Public Purpose and Approving Payment. Sixty-seven, three, seven, approve award a special bonus to the administrative employee of the month.
So moved.
Second.
And promptly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass it.
Forty, seven, twenty-six. Declare the structure at eleven-eleven Spring Hill Avenue, a public nuisance, and order it demolished slash secured.
Motion to table.
And promptly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item's table.
Forty, seven, two, seven, declare the structure at four, twenty-three Mohawk Street, a public nuisance, and order it demolished slash secured.
Move layover sixty days.
Second. And promptly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Later for Sister Dave.
CIP resolution is being introduced, twenty-one, seven, thirty-eight.
By council rules, this will layover one week.
Thank you.
Resolution is being introduced for the first time, zero-one, seven, three, nine, through zero-one, seven, fifty.
And by council rules, these will layover for one week as well.
Announcements.
Uh, District Four, Councilman, uh, Reynolds?
No announcements.
District One, Councilman Pan.
Thank you, Mr. President. On this Friday, we will have, um, I'm calling, I'm just creating this right now, so, the battle of District One, UMS Wright versus La Floor High School. Um, so we're gonna come out, and we're gonna have a great time. I'm excited about it. I know Mayor Stimson graduated from UMS Wright. I'm a La Floor grad. Let's go battle District One. See you there. Thank you, Mr. President.
District Five, Councilman Dave.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, there will be a meeting of the city council's finance committee today at one o'clock in the city council finance, in the city council conference room on the ninth floor. Uh, this will be an opportunity for the council persons to, uh, look at the proposed fiscal twenty-twenty-three budget, which has been submitted to us by the mayor, and, uh, ask any questions they may have with respect to it and gather additional information with respect to it. It is a city council working session, and as such, there will be no public comment or questions taken. Thank you, Mr. President.
District Two, Councilman Carroll.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, there's been several ongoing conversations, uh, in the community, uh, about change of Mardi Gras routes and, uh, things that may happen. Uh, I'm pleased to say that we had a fruitful conversation with the community, uh, down the bay, Oakley, Church Street East, and some of the, uh, downtown community members where there's several suggestions that have been, uh, presented to the police department about any change in the route. Uh, my request again is that those decisions are made at the chief of police level and also at the public safety director's level, so if there are any other comments or suggestions, then they should be given, uh, to the police department, and also let, let them get back to us and, uh, let us, let them make us aware of what's gonna happen with that. Uh, secondly, uh, the conversation about the civic center and how it's been ongoing. Uh, the administration has told us today, uh, that they have no problem with slowing down the process and implementing a master plan for the civic center, uh, area, which is in the rear of the actual civic center, along with the, uh, plans for revitalization and restoration and creating a master plan. Uh, I think, I was told today that it may slow down for as much as thirty days as we work ourselves through the process and making sure that we correct all, uh, pieces of the process that may currently be out of whack. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll. And Mr. Jones, Mr. Suits.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, football is back officially, and this, this week, uh, weekend, uh, South Alabama plays at home. Uh, South Alabama gives back tremendously to this city, millions of dollars, hundreds of million dollars every year, and, and free healthcare, et cetera. I would love to see us get out and support them. Let's fill the stands and, and welcome back Jags football to Mobile.
That's it. District Seven, Vice President Gregory.
Thank you, Mr. President. Some updates on Langen Park, uh, the amphitheater restroom and building there, the amphitheater building itself, um, some, uh, work is coming up on that. The advertising of the project will go out, uh, at the end of September, so once that happens, uh, we will hope to see some contracts coming forth and work opening, happening soon. I don't have a timeline on that, but we are at least moving forward, so that's good to see. Also, engineering, design, and bidding documents for dredging of the lake at Langen Park were submitted earlier in the month. Um, approval to advertise and bid for the review on this, um, goes to, um, let's see, has to go to the Alabama Department of Conservation and Natural Resources for review, and then approval to advertise will come out probably by the end of October, um, putting, um, I think construction work could begin January to February. I always hate to, um, give any sort of timelines, but again, we are moving forward with both the amphitheater and the restroom there, as well as dredging, so those are two really big projects that are coming down the road for Langen Park, and I'm just excited to see that. And many thanks to, um, all of the administration, Shonda, you in particular, and all of your folks for, uh, moving this forward and, um, looking that light at the end of the tunnel. It's a great thing. Thank you.
Another announcement from this council. I get a motion to adjourn this meeting. Promptly moving second in discussion. All in favor? All opposed?